Okay. So Father, we come to you and we just ask you, Lord, and I just thank you for this team that you put together here. You said in First Timothy that you wanted to pray for all those in authority. I thank you, Father, that you put these men and women in authority here that can run this government, Lord, to the best of our feeling with you, God willing, you know. And I thank you for all this stuff that's going to be coming up in this agenda, Lord. All the agendas, and I thank you for this new equipment that we've got here as well. And so I do pray as well for the police department for safety for them and the fire department for all their service and being first responders, and we're so grateful for them, Lord, that you laid down as well. And so I definitely want to pray for the, pray for the taxes for the pump station coming up, Lord. Thank you, Lord, that we have favor there and can keep our costs down and do everything that needs to be done in that area. And we thank you for the fire department, for the supplies that you're going to supply, where we keep that cost down. They can work together, be an official like they are, and keep working with the other police and fire department, other fire departments around, working together. So we just thank you for this. We ask for wisdom and guidance, Lord, and then to help us together, strengthen some courage as a people. And God bless America, we trust in you, Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Let's please introduce the United States of America and to your beloved four states, one nation under God, in this world with one team, justice for all.
Mayor Scott Tremblay?
Here.
Vice Mayor Tom Kinsella?
Here.
Councilwoman Jenny Sorel?
There.
Councilman Tom McClary. Let the record show that Councilman Tom McClary is absent from tonight's meeting. Councilwoman Linda Rodriguez?
Here.
City Attorney James Matthew?
Here.
City Manager John Duke?
Here.
Thank you, looking for motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Council minutes.
Second?
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At this time, we're going to open up for comments from the general public. I do have a sign-in sheet, so we'll start there. The first person I wanted to invite, as I see there's several people here, is Jaffe with CWA. Welcome.
Senator CWA from Port Ritchie. I work at sixty-three thirty-three Bridge Road, Port Ritchie, Florida. Good evening, City Council and citizens of Port Ritchie. I stand before you tonight as a representative of the workers who keep this city running, the men and women who serve the citizens through utility services, public works, building and development services, and also police and city administration. We stand before you as dedicated employees who want to continue these services but plead with you to negotiate fairly. Our dedication cannot be outweighed by the cost we live. Gas prices in November of twenty-twenty were under two dollars a gallon. Over this weekend, they have reached over four dollars per gallon for regular unleaded, doubling the cost of gas. Average rent prices increased over twenty-five percent. Inflation has risen seven point five percent in the past year. Minimum wage has increased fourteen percent for causing the cost of daily expenses to increase. We all feel the effects of this as we go to the grocery store, and costs have risen seven percent on average from last year. The World Network reports three point three percent average for twenty-twenty-two planned salary budget increases, but the city of Port Ritchie offers a two percent wage increase. As for some, could you afford to live on less than fifteen dollars an hour? This is what is asked of more than forty-eight percent of the city's hourly employees. A local convenience store openly advertises wages starting at fifteen dollars per hour, and a local retailer is posting entry-level jobs starting at twenty-four. Median wage for the three thousand and fifty-two citizens that reside in the city of Port Ritchie is nineteen dollars and fourteen cents per hour, more than sixty percent of the employees that serve them. I'm calling you to consider a comprehensive salary survey analysis to develop a wage assessment, classification structure, and definitive job description qualifications to be implemented in the next year to reach a fair wage goal for these workers. Let's consider what can be done now. Consider raising the rate of the members making less than fifteen dollars an hour by one dollar. While the CWA considers the two percent increase for the rest of the membership. This is not going to keep on the employees from getting closer to poverty as the minimum wage continues to increase, but it will help distance the employees who are closest to that poverty line. I remind you that we are still negotiating a contract that was supposed to be in effect in October but have not reached an agreement. We are in the period where we should be considering what can be done by this October. That being said, please consider a two-year contract with a wage opener. This means that we negotiate the terms being presented and lock them in for two years, but still consider what the cost of limit increase can be for the next fiscal year. I call you to consider providing all safety equipment required for the job instead of an allowance, giving supervisors control over the equipment they require in the field to keep employees safe and save the city workers from complaints. The city has invested time and money.
You can keep going.
Okay. The city has invested time and money to employ and train the workers that keep the city running. I call you to retain them and incentivize long-term employment by agreeing to a longevity benefit for ten-plus years of service. Fifty cents for hours not too much to ask for an employee has dedicated ten years of his or her career to serving you and your constituents. Let's make it a goal to retain all of these workers that the city has invested time and money to train and to scale workers that support the services that the city is built on. Fair contract negotiation is the starting point that leads to that goal. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person that signed up is Danny Fields, welcome.
Yes, um, Danny Fields, and that address is going to be eighty-one fourteen Leo Kid Avenue, and that's in Port Ritchie, September three, four, six, six, uh, three, I believe, maybe, I can't remember somewhere here. He would ask me to remind us of the calendar that we have, the stuff that's coming up in the park. And the first one is going to be Easter plant at Waterfront Park, and then we're going to go through the dates. And he wanted to know, he was asked about some city officials that could, you guys put this on your calendar. That's something I don't know if we could do, if we could advertise this, but we appreciated this faith-based church and government working together with the police and the fire department to be out there to represent the city of Port Ritchie. And so, and we were grateful for the allowance to go do that work and teaming up to reach out to the community. The communities always have a great turnout with stuff like that. So we got April the sixteenth, Easter in Waterfront Park, and then we come up, and we're going to bring out some more day of praise as well. So we started that for forty days. Leonard told me he already given books on that. And so thank you for all those that look over the book and pray. We're praying for this city, we're praying for this city, and we thank you for that as well. So, and we, the second part of that is July the thirtieth, back-to-school backpack giveaway at Waterfront Park. And what that is, is we collect the money from donations and we get backpacks to our kids at school. So that way, they're equipped, we pray for them, we fellowship, they get to know the police officers and the fire trucks and this gets connected, and that's reaching in our communities. And this is going to go on in everything. We do Care Fest on September twenty-fourth. That is working the area for the disability, the seniors and all them, and our veterans to go fix up their houses. And we supply all that, too. So I'm letting you know what somebody cares does. Leonard has probably addressed all this, but he's asked me to just remind each other of that. So we have Fall Fest coming up in October the twenty-ninth. And so that was really celebrating the harvest of the good things in our life and the things that we accomplished, like you have here, this technology and improvements in our area. And I still got fifteen minutes, so I'm doing pretty good. So we're on December tenth, Christmas in the park. So we get to tell the story about Christmas and what it's really about, which is really about Jesus Christ body, Mary, and Rose, and get guests. So thank you for your time and blessings.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fields. The last person that's signed up, at least on this portion, is Pat Rogers, welcome, come on.
Good evening, Pat Rogers, where you should create subject. I just want to thank everybody for the work that they're doing for us, our policemen, our firemen, our DMPS, the public utilities, the work. I see it in my neighborhood, how the work is helping you, and it looks good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. That's all that's signed up, but I see other folks from the general public. If anyone would like to speak, just raise your hand, please. Seeing no hands, we're going to move on. Two comments from our city manager, and I wanted to invite Mr. Dude at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Smoke test results, we've had seven leaks mediated by property owners. We expect a number more to be completed. Sent out letters several weeks ago, the deadline for compliance on those letters was April two. And so Public Works continues to work with property owners. Public Works is also in the process of pricing manhole liners and lids for some of our own manholes that had smoke test leaks, so making progress on that. I'll have one more opportunity to update you before the April second deadline. Citywide cleanup is going well, it's pretty busy out in the yard in the morning, and it picks up again in the afternoon, but Public Works tells me there's lots of folks bringing their stuff in. So I want to encourage people to utilize that opportunity. This week, we're starting a water main upgrade on Queener. We're going to put in about five hundred and fifty feet of new four-inch water line. There's thirteen connections along that stretch of five hundred and fifty feet. Six of those are new construction, seven of them are existing homes. In my discussion with Public Works, they told me it's currently a two-inch galvanized steel main that narrows down to an inch and a half and then ultimately down to one inch. It's been in the ground for forty-plus years. If you've ever looked at a water pipe steel after it comes out, it may be two inches on the outside, but it's actually half of that on the inside. So those folks on the far end of that line are probably being served by a half-inch pipe. And so we're going to put in a four-inch pipe, should see a significant increase in water pressure, water service. City staff is going to be doing the majority of the work, so it'll be much cheaper than if we hired a contractor. This is something that our personnel have the capacity to do. Just a quick update on the fishing pier. We did have an engineering firm take a look at it, we're going to work with them on, we're going to cut some holes on top of the piers, the pylons, excuse me. They're going to do some core testing down through the top of the pylons and give us an assessment of whether those pylons are stable or whether they're not. So you may see our guys out there with a chainsaw or a skill saw, but we've got to open up the top of the pylon so that the engineering firm can drill a hole down through the top of it. We thought we could go in through the sides, and the engineering firm is not comfortable with that. They said there may be structures that would be damaged by doing that. So you may see some activity out there here over the next week or two. And City Hall, iWork goes live on the fifteenth of March, and that'll include permitting, code enforcement, doing some final tweaks on that. We ran into a challenge between our system and our procedures and the iWork software, so the iWork folks are in the process of sorting that out. We expect to have that all up and running by the fifteenth of March. The upgrade for the AV system in here comes in here in a couple of weeks. Hopefully by the next council meeting, we'll have individual controls. Other than that, I think the system is all in place the way we expect it to be. So we'll work out the bugs as we find them. Really appreciate Sal and Ashley and Christina making that happen, there were others, but they did the bulk of the work. I've been going through, meeting individually with department heads, we're putting together CIP budget documents, basically getting an idea of what large purchases are anticipated for the upcoming fiscal year. And once we've got those documents created, then we'll bring those in for council to consider, give you an opportunity to look at that. The intent is to not put the entire, here's everything we want to do in front of you on one night and then have you wrestle with an entire six million dollar budget. So we're going to bring in those larger items. I told department heads, if it has tires, if it has a hitch, if it has five figures or more in its purchase price, put it on the list and we'll bring it into council. We can talk about that. So we'll spread that out over a couple of council meetings. We're in the process of developing that for you now. CRA audit recommendations, myself, Mr. Matthew, and Miss Scotland continue to work on meeting the recommendations. You've got, Mr. McClary had asked for a copy of our tracking document, you've got that in front of you. I put in, read the things that have changed since the last time you saw that document. So I wanted you to have an update on what we're doing to meet those recommendations. And here in the next four to six weeks, you'll probably see some of those coming to CRA board meeting for consideration and approval. But wanted to, on Mr. McClary's request, wanted to bring you that document. We continue to meet every two weeks for fireworks planning. We talked about vendors this past week, also talked about PD and fire plans. I know the fire department has some pretty extensive plans that they've put together for events in the past. And so we got the two chiefs together and kind of laying out where are we going to stage people, but who's responsible for what. We'll move on to other logistics in our next meeting, but just so you know, we're still working on fireworks. Didn't want to mention that Chief Paula Castrey was requested by the state of Florida to deploy to the Panhandle over the weekend to help some folks up there with wildland fires. Chief did make his way up there and lend some service. He had to cut out quicker than he expected for some family matters back home, but appreciate him helping out our neighbors. And there'll come a time when we're going to ask for that favor to be returned, but appreciate Chief being able to go up and help our friends in the Panhandle. Did have an opportunity to sit in on the CAC meeting this past week and talked through some ideas that they had, kind of laid out some of the purpose for the CAC. So I appreciate the invitation to meet with them. And the mayor and I had the honor of attending a ribbon cutting last week. There's a new medical practice just down the street, they asked us to join for that. And so wanted to welcome them to Newport or to Port Ritchie. They're actually just outside of the city limits, but we're not going to tell them that. Appreciate them being part of our community. The documents in front of me, that's all I have, I stand for your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dude. I'm going to start to my left and start with Ms. Rodriguez, if she had any questions or comments.
Not at this time, thank you. I'm fine, thank you.
And I have a couple. On the pier?
Yes, sir.
After they do the core sample, so for what other things that we need to do to keep this moving along?
Well, once we know whether the pylons are sound or not, that gives us the next step, and that's where the real money takes place. If the pylons are sufficient, we can put together a plan to rebuild the pier. If pylons are not sufficient, then we've got even bigger money decisions to make about, do you want to build a whole new pier there? You know, because you really have to have stable pylons to put something on top of it. So that's the next step, once we know whether the pylons are sufficient to hold up the weight of a new pier or not. But it's pretty clear that if the pylons are sufficient, then we're going to have to take the deck off and rebuild the wood deck on top of it.
And when are we going to get that report?
I would expect here in the next two to four weeks. We met with them two weeks ago, and I don't want to put words in the engineer's mouth, but it would seem reasonable to me, shall we say, two to four weeks, we should have those results.
As long as keeps moving along.
Perfect. Right, thank you. That's all right now, thank you.
And I just had a couple of things. One of the things that you talked about is that we asked you to do, so I appreciate it, is getting a budget preview with each of the departments in terms of larger items. One of the things I think that Mr. McClary and I, we were both talking about when we did that, is not just getting the items presented to us, but talking about recommendations and funding sources and what that will have in terms of an impact on the city moving forward. So I was hoping that, that once we have those bigger items, that maybe there would be some staff work with potentially Mrs. Scotland to see where we're at in terms of the budget and the affordability. And I was wondering if you were going to be able to present that as well when you do that.
Yes, we are including that in our work.
So just as a clarification, one clarification. The other thing I wanted to ask you is if there was any information on the upcoming election. We have municipal elections, look like they're set. And I didn't know if there was any information that was out there where the general public can read about it, to know the dates and what's going on with that.
I believe that's been posted on our Facebook and website. Check with the clerk to confirm. Yes, that information's been posted.
Okay. And then the other thing we touched, you touched on the CRA audit. And one of the things that you had talked about that I felt was really important was part of the recommendation was a potential agreement between the three entities, which would be the county, the city, and then the CRA board. And I know that you guys had a meeting, there were lawyers on both sides working on that, and I know that you've been in contact with Mr. Biles, the administrator over in the county. Can you just give us a brief update, as I think that's probably one of the bigger things that needs to happen between now and the next few months coming into budget season?
Yeah, we, Mr. Matthew and I did meet with Mr. Biles, his legal staff, and a couple of other staff members. The outcome of that meeting was an agreement that the county attorney's office would put together a draft, get that draft agreement to Mr. Matthew for his review. That's where we are right now, and I spoke to Mr. Biles a week ago. He said it was in process, he did check with the county attorney's office, she is working on it, but it's not done. So I'll follow up with him on a pretty regular basis to try to keep that moving.
And I appreciate the follow-up from about a week ago, we appreciate that as well.
Yeah. And if I could, Mr. Mayor?
Of course.
I don't know if you noticed, the air conditioner came on, and it did not sound like a seven forty-seven taking off. It's on, thank Sam for making that happen, you know. It used to sound like a jet taking off in here, so I don't know what magic this contractor pulled, but appreciate that. Sometimes it's small things.
Thank you, and I believe that closes out comments from the city manager. I saw that there was general public had signed up on this particular item. Mr. Mueller, would you like to speak at this time?
Welcome. Thank you, Mueller, five four three nine, blue point draw. There was some echo coming out of this, I'm assuming you guys are still working through some of the sound quality.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate that, as well as the monitors back there. Hopefully that'll help with presentations. One of the things that didn't touch on it is where do you stand with the dredging, treasury? Nothing was brought up on that, that's been lingering on for over a year. Somebody needs to heat them up over there and see where we stand with that and see what the next steps are so that we can give them, that thing's been deferred for almost two years now. Because the first quarter came back with only one party entertaining bid on that. It's one of those things that we tend to start something and don't good or not good finishers. But I'd like to see some change in this city, and let's have finished projects instead of starts and stop projects. Appreciate whatever you can do to get things moving in that direction, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. With that, we're going to open up comments from the council. I'll start my left, if there's any.
I'm right, with right now, thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing at this time?
Okay. I had two items I wanted to touch on, and actually one had to do with the Restore Act funds that we had. So I have that on my list to talk about. This is a project that started, from my understanding, about seven years ago. And it's worked through the process, and the city in good faith, probably about halfway through, expended their third of the money. What happened is, I think the plans changed to a certain degree. What happened is the county commission had voted at some point to set that money aside from the Restore Act, so it didn't have to go back through the Restore Act committee, which was headed up, I think, by Mr. Mariano and some other people. And the county actually set that money aside for us before we came out with the next bid. The concern is that bid is now two years in, and a lot of the administration that to administer this particular Restore Act money really isn't something the city administers, but it's something the county administers, and really that's what the hang-up is, is to be honest with you, to me, it seems like it's on the very bottom of the county's list of things to do, based on the amount of money, and it's something that they're doing in essence for us through treasury. What I'd like to do is have a discussion, because that money, if you'll look, when we get to the CRA portion, is money that's been set aside as a reimbursement grant. So that's money that has just been locked up that we can't use, and it's just sitting there. So at some point, we're seven years in, we haven't been able to do anything with it. We really need to have a discussion at some point, do we cut it loose and use that money for something else? Because frankly, even if Treasury now, two years later, says, hey, I think let's go forward, if the person that accepted the bid years ago looks at it now, probably has the right to back out or potentially back out because it's been so long and there's inflation and other issues. So, you know, I think we as a city or as a group really need to look at that money and decide whether or not we want to continue to pursue that, change what the money could be used for, or just abandon it altogether. And I think that's a discussion that we need to have. And the reason I say that is because we're getting into a project with our CRA where we're expending the money on the waterfront overlay district, and we have about seven hundred thousand dollars that's just locked up that can't be spent at this time because it's set aside for reimbursement. And that's been set aside now for, I think, seven years, and it's just sitting there. So I think we need to have a discussion, and I wanted to see how you guys felt about putting that on for discussion at some point.
Yes, we're off discussion for sure.
Do we have that right, since we've already earmarked that, do we have the right to change it?
That's part of the discussion, you know, but I think that's something the city staff's going to have to look into and make recommendations.
How would the county receive that?
Well, they get their portion of the money back, so I don't think there'd be any hard term there. Or we could try and repurpose it potentially, too. So those are different things that I thought we should talk about. Because originally, and where I was going with this originally, that money in large part was to redevelop the waterfront overlay district with what we're already doing. So if we repurpose that money and can get some lighting sidewalks paid for and get reimbursed for it, that would be even better. You know, but I think that's a discussion that our city, that we should have first, and then depending on where we go, potentially have our city management contact the county to see where they're at with it. But, you know, I would think that's a discussion for all five of us, and Mr. McClary says as well.
So where is the holdup right now?
So city staff and county staff conferred earlier this week. To the best of our understanding, city has everything in that's needed and has for some time.
Okay.
County is, city and county are rescinding information, I'm sorry. City staff is rescinding information to the county. Stuff they're asking for again. So we're sending the same documents that we've sent before. And our last contact with Treasury was that there was no additional news. But ultimately Treasury, the next step is for Treasury to say it's approved or it's not approved.
And how often do we contact the Treasury to find out where that is?
Every two weeks right before council meeting.
Okay. So we have, so we've been contacting them, it's not like it's been sitting there and we've ignored it?
No, and I, my mistake leaving it off of my report, I took it on there. But, and I just copy-paste what I said last two weeks ago. But yes, we, Pam makes contact with first connection at Treasury, and when he says there's nothing new to report, that's what we report back. So, you know, our conference with county today was just to make sure we're all on the same page, make sure they're not waiting on us for something, or we're waiting on them. But as far as city and county, no, everything that is needed has been submitted, so. And that was our understanding three months ago, four months ago. Treasury had everything they needed from the city.
So the ball is in the Treasury's?
Yes.
Life as to whether or not we move forward with this? And then, of course, as Scott said, whether or not the company that put the bid in will honor? will honor that is a whole different entity. So but we can't even go that far because it's in the Treasury's lap. Okay. Thank you. I just want to make sure I understood that. Thank you.
But my concern is this has been going on for seven years. We just have money just sitting there that's earmarked that can't be spent. So I would really like to readdress.
But it almost sounds like it's the county that's that's keeping it hostage.
It's almost like a pass through grant in a lot of ways. So I think the county had a lot of responsibilities in terms of following the Treasury. And our applications were filtered through the county, which would then supposedly go from county to Treasury. And I think that's where the issue was at some point, was the communication between county and Treasury. So, you know, I think that was where a lot of the problem lies with this process and why it's taken seven years, in my opinion.
And we're not getting any cooperation from the county on this?
No, we we are in close contact with the county. And a couple of months ago, there was a document or an update to a document that Treasury was waiting for county to perform. And my understanding is county had some personnel turnover. They maybe didn't move it along as quick as they could have. But at this point, that document has been updated, provided to Treasury. There's, as far as we know, there's nothing else for the county. They're, I don't get the sense they're holding it up. You know, they may have slowed it down unintentionally just by having personnel change. But as far as we know, Treasury has everything they need to make their decision, both from the city and the county. And because we talk to them every, you know, every two weeks or so, my assumption is if if Andrew at Treasury needs something from us, he'll tell us. But we check in with them regularly to see if there's any change.
But I I'm not understanding where the actual delay is. Why can't a decision be made of this period of time that we've been waiting? And every time from the city part, they ask, we provide. But yet we haven't moved anywhere forward. So I'm just wondering where where's where's this being held up at? Of which end?
Treasury. Treasury's the next step. And I I wouldn't want to answer for them. But city and county are awaiting their answer.
If you'd like, we can be much more specific with Andrew and see if he'd give us something more specific.
I mean, if there if there's something they're lacking, at least please tell us so we know what direction to go, what we need to do, keep moving along here. I mean, it's been on just this one item. And if we decide to go a different direction, there's gonna be seven years again that we don't form. We we don't need that.
Right.
I'm just looking, what do we need to do to keep this moving along?
And and the reason I was putting it on for discussion, just so I'm not hiding the ball from you guys, is the discussion, what I'd like to do is repurpose the money instead of using it to try and dredge that one channel. Use it as part of the redevelopment for our waterfront overlay district, which is part of the original plan anyways from Treasury, and then see if we can get reimbursed for that. But at least it would free up another six or seven hundred grand to put towards that waterfront overlay project. And that's what my thought was, but I, you know, so that's the Reader's Digest version. But I thought it was, it would merit some discussion.
Absolutely.
And it may be better for our people at this point, our citizens, to have more money for that project versus trying to dredge just that one little area, especially if that bid may may have expired at some point.
Do we have, do we have an option to make that change? I mean, up until then, up until the last six years, we've always been told we can't change that because we already made that commitment. But can we make that commitment now or change that commitment?
If you're asking me, you can withdraw your application for the Restore Act, ladies face one.
Okay, would that mean that we'd lose it?
When you say lose it, it's a matching grant. You'd lose the fact that they would match against the three thirty-three.
So that might be completely wrong.
Well, see.
I think that's the thing that I understood in the past, that if we change the parameters, then we're gonna lose it.
It was a bringers from the original, from the original application.
Everything we've done in the past to meet everything that the government wants to do, and the Treasury is the one that doesn't want to come through for us now. Will we lose that money if we change the plan from dredging to something else?
This, one of the dialogues that I think when we had the discussion, I was gonna ask some staff to have with the county. Because at this point, they've set the money aside so it doesn't have to go back through the actual Restore Act process.
That's why I've seen the delay in the last seven years is because they wouldn't let us change that. So now now you're saying that we can maybe change that?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, that may have been part of the original plan, was to put some of the money down in the waterfront overlay district. So if that was part of the original plan, we may be, what I'm suggesting is we may be able to look at it to change that. Because we're not changing the original application. It was for dredging, I think boat ramps, and I think lighting sidewalks and development of the of the waterfront area over there. So if that was part of the application, I don't see why we can't just repurpose the money or at least have that discussion. Instead of dredging, have it go towards light sidewalks and what we're doing down there anyways.
I think that's a great idea. It's always been a good idea.
And then if we can get reimbursed for it, it's even better. But right now, you have six, seven hundred grand just center on that we can't spend on anything. It's just sitting there. You know, so even if we withdraw our implication, that frees up our money that we have earmarked for reimbursement. Not suggesting I want to lose that money.
Well, that's what I was asking. Because in the last six years, I've been told that if we changed anything, that we would lose it. And that's why I'm saying this discussion is excellent. And I think it's about, I did have one on it to find out what our options are on that. But I was under the distinct impression that if we changed that application, we would lose it.
And that may be, I don't know the answer, but that was one of the, one of the reasons I was bringing this up is because I know that we have staff here that can probably find that answer out.
Oh, yeah.
And and once we go into the discussion, they may have a preview or have talked to the county and have some idea on on what they think.
I think it's an excellent time to do that, especially since we're becoming active in the WOD anyway.
So over the last seven years, have we made any interest on this? Just asking, not to know.
It doesn't belong to us.
It's a reimbursement grant. So we earmarked the money and set it aside, and we never spent it because it's not been approved. So like I said, the money's just kind of sitting there, but it's been, it's been locked, it's been locked away to where we can't spend it on other things either. Obviously, if we did the project and it was reimbursed, we can move on and spend the money. But, you know, I think if it's been seven years and it hasn't gone through, I have a concern that we're just, our citizens have money that's sitting there that's never gonna be spent. And I don't think that's fair to our citizens either. So, you know, I want to address it and see what we can do.
I like the idea.
So I was hoping that they could put that together. And then I had one other thing that I was gonna touch, touch on, just in our comments, is actually that we have ARPA funding that's coming down. And I was gonna ask city staff to put together recommendations for potential roadwork and sidewalks where we could use ARPA funds in the next few meetings before the budget comes. So we can have some discussion on how to spend that ARPA money and whether or not we want to use it on specific roadwork or sidewalk projects and kind of see what the city's recommendations are. And I know that we've already had the discussion last budget season as it related to, and I'm drawing a blank on the name, the the road that we were gonna repave. And we didn't have the money in the budget last year to do it.
Clark Moody?
Clark Moody. And then, you know, I think there are potentially a couple of the roads that even if we don't need to repave, we can just re-stripe. I see that some of the roads are in pretty good condition, but the striping and the paintwork is gone. So we could just kind of upgrade the maintenance on some of that. So I was hoping to put that on, if you guys are okay by consensus to put that on as well. And that's, I apologize to a couple of you guys' time, but that's all I had for comments from the council. At this time, if you'd have a seat, please. Thank you. At this time, we had comments from the general public as it relates to our comments. Mr. Mueller was signed up. Welcome.
Dave Mueller, five four three nine Blue Point Drive. I know you guys were going on some discussion about reappropriating those BP funds from the Restore Act. But we also have a line item in our budget for boat ramp repair. I think it's around two hundred thousand. While you're having this thing here, coming with it here, you might want to have a peak under the other, the other structure there because there are a lot of cross members that, and passengers that look like they need to be addressed as well. But if you aren't given consideration to reappropriating those funds from dredging in front of booters and and the seaside and along that way, it might be, it might be a close effort if it was affecting that pier and affecting that boat. And might be able to get that into the state pool of funds or activities. Just a thought.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. That closes out general comments as it relates to mayor and city council. We're gonna move on to comments from boards and committees. I didn't know, I didn't see where anyone had signed up, but any boards and committees, they're welcome to speak at this time. Come on.
Angela Adams, C and C. Just wondering if the city managers are coming out and spending some time with us and giving us an education, which was really awesome. We was able to spend time with our members and explain the city function, so that we can argue, design to to operate in an effective manner. I found you to be very helpful and helpful. I would like to invite other members of council, of the citizens for meetings to give our members, our members an opportunity to know and have a chance to ask questions. Not everybody gets a chance to come inside the office and take up time during work, allowing to have this to ask you there. So you can come in just for about two minutes just to explain exactly, you know, what you do to the city. And there's any questions that we can ask of you so that we're better informed. So when we talk to citizens and they say things or super things, we can kind of set the record straight and give them the proper information. So in the upcoming meeting, I believe next month, some things on the agenda that it may help the city, help with communication, improving communication with, you know, having the right information for the city and the different departments and our citizens or whatever gives it help. So we'll be bringing that to you in the next meeting, I believe. But just want to say thanks and looking forward to helping improve our city communications and our citizens and whatever we can do to help you.
Thank you. And if I can just comment, one of the reasons that that I don't attend those meetings as much as I did, I did a few in the beginning, is because you have some sunshine rules. And a lot of times, you guys are an advisory committee, and you make recommendations that ultimately come to us on the dais here. So, you know, I know that someone on the dais sits on that committee. And normally, most government agencies, when they have a dais like this, have one person on the dais on each committee, but never more than one at each meeting because it creates sunshine law issues. So that's generally, in my mind, why I don't go to those meetings is I am cognizant of of those rules. And I know that Vice Mayor Consella serves faithfully on that board. And he does a nice job working with you guys to make the right recommendations or good recommendations for us and come up with some good projects. But, you know, I don't want to put either one of us in a position to where we're violating those rules. So that's generally why, yeah, I don't attend, and I would presume some of the other members of us.
That's fine. No, what we did is like we, you know, after we were done taking the information and asking him, you know, about the city and his position and how it works and what we could do as, you know, our committee, how that helps the city. What could we do to improve communication? Like, what are we doing? We want to make sure we are in our right lane and you guys are in your lane and how do we affect each other in the most healthy way, you know, without violating any laws and stuff? Because we have new members, so it was a good opportunity. But after we were done with that, we asked him, please.
Okay.
You know, and that's what we're talking about is is giving our committee a chance to meet, you know, our city attorney for a few minutes and just letting them tell us, you know, if they have any questions, like what exactly, you know, you do for the city, if they have any questions about that, his position, not about his, we'll tell them, you know, that nature. You know, maybe even our different department heads, you know, in state, you know, just getting to know each each other better. That's all. But no, not when it comes down to us making decisions. You'll have to leave after we get to know.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Angela, bring up the next meet your neighbor.
Pardon?
Next.
Next meet your neighbor is April.
Six.
Six at Whiskey River from five to seven. Am I right, Tom?
Whiskey River, yes, five to seven.
Okay, we hope to see you all there.
Thank you. I believe that's all the departments that we had here. We're gonna move on to our consent agenda, and I was looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, we're gonna move on to council business. We're gonna start with item number three listed as the Bay Boulevard lift station, lift station pump purchase. I'm gonna pass that to Mr. Dufresne at auction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The utility department is requesting permission to purchase a forty horse, three phase, four sixty lift station pump for the Bay Boulevard lift station. This is a backup pump. In the event that one of the pumps in that lift station fails, we would want to have one basically sitting on the shelf and ready to go. We had to go out and purchase one on the fly. Lift station would be overrun pretty quickly. So custom pump and control was the longest time that we had. Request a motion to approve the city staff to make that purchase.
The question I had, is this a pump that can be used in any lift station or just one specific area? Just that one?
This is, this is specifically for the Bay Boulevard lift station. We have, we have pumps for all our other lift stations except for Bay Boulevard. And Bay Boulevard is one of our largest main lift stations. It handles all the flow in the north side.
How often do we replace the pumps?
Well, it's not really necessarily in the emergency or in the matter of replacing, but in the fact of an emergency. If this pump was, if one of those pumps was to go down, we would have to run twenty-four hour back to service constantly just due to the amount of flow that goes to that lift station. Because that covers everything from Harbor Isles, San Pebble, Harbor Point, all the way down to Bay Boulevard, Baltimore Post, Ethan, Avila Bay, and the great portion of our northwest side. So the thing is that in my, in the, in the city's maintenance compound, I basically have a backup pump for the other forty-three lift stations that we have. I do not have a backup pump for for Bay Boulevard.
The only other question I had is, is this part of the budget from this year's? Slash, is budgeted? Did we budget this item?
It's budgeted out of the utility line item.
Yeah, we have money in our utility fund to purchase this pump. It comes out of utility fund.
Right, but was it budgeted for this year? Or is it's an item that's not originally in the budget?
Well, we have money set aside. This particular item was not budgeted for, you know, for the budget, but we have money in the budget to purchase this pump. Where we won't, where we also have money to make purchases for this.
No, I understand there's money there, but it's not a budgeted item, so.
What is this, what, this pump was not a specific item set aside, no.
And I guess the other question I had is, is this an item that we could purchase in this budget year? In other words, budgeted for this year, which this budget year is coming up in a few months. And then that way, it's a budgeted item as opposed to spending it outside, buying it outside the budget? Is that something we can do?
Well, you can do that, but it just, I I strongly urge you the fact that this is, I do not have any backup pumps for this. It's just that to have at least one backup is truly recommended. This, this pump should have been bought, you know, when Bay Boulevard went online. Like I said, I have backup pumps for every single other lift station except for this one.
On, on the memo from February twenty-fourth, the last line says payment for this item. It's budgeted within the utility budget line item, and then it gives the number.
Yes.
So it is budgeted.
Well, the monies would come out of that, out of that line item. We do have monies available in that line item for for pump purchases. So we have, we have, I don't have the total amount that we have within our budget, but we, you know, this is part of that budget line item.
Right.
So if I don't buy this pump, there are other pumps that I would buy out of the same line item.
So this is replacing other pumps that we could have purchased that we're not gonna?
Well, what I'm saying is that I just don't, this is coming out of a line item we already have pre-existing for pump purchases.
And we just haven't spent that money in this, in this budget cycle.
Well, we have spent for smaller pumps, but they wouldn't come to you because of their, their amount of money. This was a, a large, this is a very large pump for a very large lift station. So of course this would come to council because due to its amount.
I guess the better question is, how much money is left in that line item?
I don't have the budget in front of me to, to tell you after this would be deducted. I would have to get the budget.
The question I'm trying to figure out, is this coming out of contingencies ultimately at the end of the year?
No.
Okay, so then the answer is that there would be money left in this line item? Because that way it wouldn't be coming out of contingency, that's, that's what I'm coming from.
There's other monies in the line item for other pump purchases.
Okay, that, that's all I'm trying to figure out. With that, I'll, if you guys have any questions and or motions.
Is this big, is this the lift station at Culvers or the one further down?
This is on the corner of Bay Boulevard and, um, Wilkins, which is right behind Culvers, yes.
Okay. When they redid that one, they put in new pumps at that time, didn't they?
Yep.
So you're just wanting to make sure we have a backup in the event that we're open on. My neighborhood, I think we should have one. And it's your neighborhood and your neighborhood and not yours.
Motion to approve the Bay Boulevard lift station? A motion to second, before we vote, it's open to the general public for any comment before we vote, Mr. Mueller, come on.
Dan Mueller, five four three nine Blue Point Drive. Does anybody have a list of all of the pumps, there are forty-three sections? Some of them have overlap and you can utilize a pump for one and maybe several of them. But evidently this is a pump that is not on the standard line. And it behooves us to understand what that standard configuration looks like. And there's no reason to have forty-three extra pumps on the shelf. But you might want to consider where they're overlapping and what we can do to align to some kind of standard config with small, medium, large or whatever to help alleviate some of that problem and minimize costs. It behooves us to understand that there's an inventory of this and where we spend with regard to each of those of our stations, since it is a critical infrastructure component that the city residents rely on. And I appreciate somebody with that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. We have a motion and a second, at this time it's going to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes, we're gonna move on to item number, listed as number four, council business, and that's fire department surplus. I'm gonna pass it to Mr. Duke for an introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The chief and his staff put together a list of pieces of equipment that are no longer functional, no longer have any residual value to the city. And the chief is requesting identifying these as surplus to be disposed of, would request a motion to that effect.
Motion to approve fire department equipment, so forth, property and disposed of by proper means determined by the city.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes.
Is that the last closet we're cleaning out?
Yeah.
Oh, no. Oh, no.
All right, any old business?
Yeah, can I bring up something?
Of course.
Old business? We talked about old business all the time and I'll be honest with you, I walked out of here and what old business becomes really old business and I just don't remember. So when it comes to old business, can we start having like a running list of what our old businesses are? So we could keep up with, with what our old business is and, and be able to start checking month of the list? I mean, just help us maintain, we make recommendations, we try to move forward, but yet we get distracted, move someplace else and a lot of these things, and I'm guilty of it, I'm sorry. But I forget a lot of these things, so having a running list of what our old business is, that would help. So we know to keep it on the agenda and gradually scratch it off.
And I agree, and I, I think one of the things that I do is instead of old business, I just bring it back up in general commentary and I think a lot of us do that.
Most of us assume some responsibility for some particular aspect and then we work it out from that one actually. Because sometimes it gets old, it's not relevant anymore.
I think keeping track of that is a good idea, so we can follow up on it for sure.
And I agree, but I think there's a lot of overlap between old business and then when he goes, the city management goes through these, probably they are old business or, or when I say old business, they're in progress, but they're, for example, restored to seven years old, old business. So, you know, we, we bring that up in the general commentary, but it, it's still in essence old business as well. So my preference is always to bring it up earlier in the meeting than at the end. But, you know, I think that, you know, there's some discussion to keep tabs and bring it up at the end too.
As long as we have some, you know, honesty to help us and citizens where we're at on, on some of these things, so it's not forgotten. I just don't like the idea of them disappearing off to the side and we do forget, I forget.
Actually, we did not have old business on our agenda until a couple of years ago. And so there was never any of our business brought up. We finally started bringing it up so that we could review some of these things.
Perfect, thank you. I believe that's all, the old business looking for motion?
Motion, John? Second.
All in favor? Aye. Let's take a, and we'll come back for the.